Good evening and welcome to tonight's Selectmen's meeting. Before we begin, I would like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Vice Chair Chicalini to please lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you all please remain standing? I would ask for a moment of silence, please, for Sean McGrath and his family, who recently passed away, as well as Richard Serino Jr. He was just waived this evening. He was in that terrible house fire in Revere. So if we could please just have a moment of silence for both of these gentlemen. Thank you. I would like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
And our Town Manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree.
Our Clerk Meredith.
And Meredith, thank you for putting together our packages this evening. I want to welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience and those watching at home. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and I want to thank SCTV for being here the second time today to record our meetings. We did have a meeting earlier with our state delegation. Senator Brenton Crichton, Representative Donald Wong, and Representative Jessica Janino met with the full board, and we talked about many different things concerning the residents in our community, including traffic, Route 1, the junk handle light over in Peabody, wind waste, collared shoes, condition of Route 1 meridians, Fox Hill Bridge, floodgates, and a number of other topics. So we're very grateful that we have that partnership with our state delegation, and I want to thank the full board. I think it was a great meeting with a lot of interesting and productive discussion. The first item on the agenda, we have invited guests, and our invited guest is the Garden Club in Saugus. It is their 80th anniversary, and these, most of them are ladies, but we do have some gentlemen that are also members of the Garden Club. I think, well, we're going to call Donna Minugian up, who's one of the co-presidents, along with the Garden Club members. If you wouldn't mind, please, Donna, coming up? They do so much in our town. It's not just having a green thumb. They do so much volunteerism, they do so much charity work in our community, and they've been around for 80 years, and they're incredibly active. And we're thrilled tonight to give you a citation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Saugus, on your anniversary. And I'm sure that each one of our board members would like to say a few words. And Selectman Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Welcome, everybody. It's a great, 80 years is a long time to keep something going and to keep having everybody want to join it, to make it interesting. I know all the things that you do and the classes that you have. I know Lorraine. She used to do the altar, right, emphysema sacrament?
Yes.
A long time ago? Oh, that's okay. I know you did it, and you were great.[246.12][246.12](Laughter). So, welcome, everyone, and thank you, and I hope it's another 80 years.
Thank you. And Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, congratulations on your 80 years, and thank you for all coming out tonight in this horrible heat wave that we're having, but it's nice to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Selectman Serino?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to congratulate you on 80 years. Wow, it's a long time. Not many organizations today stay together that long. You do so much for the town, and all of yours are an asset to our community. I know I seen you out there at the strawberry festival last weekend. I went in to have a strawberry shark cake, but I didn't come out to buy a plant because -- I'm sorry, I apologize, but the plant wouldn't last, wouldn't last me two days. It'd be dead. So I have all artificial stuff, unfortunately. But thank you very much for being part of our community. Thank you.
We'll get you a succulent. You can't kill one of those. Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, once again, congratulations. 80 years, truly amazing. Obviously, days like today are a challenge for some, for many gardens, of course, and flowers, and, but seeing what you do around town and how active the group is, is truly remarkable, and the fact that, as Selectman Serino said, the fact that, to see the Garden Club or any club stick together for 80 years, you don't see that often, so it's a true testament to the dedication of everybody. So thank you for all you do, and again, congratulations.
Selectman Serino?
Madam Chairman, I forgot one thing. I did attend the function you had up here at Town Hall about a month ago.
Yeah, May.
And I was sitting in the back for about a half hour. I had another engagement to go to, but I couldn't believe how many people. There had to be 100 people here at your event. I was really surprised by that and kind of excited about it for the club.
It's a lot of fun, and I got to be the auctioneer, which was a lot of fun. So, Mrs. Minugian, can you tell us a little bit about the Garden Club and your 80 years here?
Of course I can. I'm always happy to talk about the Garden Club. It was formed in 1945, and it was part of the Victory Gardens that were sweeping the country. And from that, 28 people were in the, in the beginning stages, and we have grown. Right now, we have just over 70 members. We had a dip in membership back in the '60s and '70s, and we changed from daytime meetings and lunches at members' homes to the evening meetings so that we could accommodate more women who were working, and that's what really helped make the change. And now we're, we're looking at some split between evening meetings and daytime meetings to accommodate more. We partner with Save. We partner with the library and the New Friends of the Library for our books in bloom. And the, any organization, really, that wants us to come and speak, we're very happy to come and tell them a little bit about the history of the club.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to just echo everyone's comments. I just think it's fantastic that 80 years and really going strong. It's such a great organization and such a community-building group of people that get together and really, very impressive. So congratulations to all of yous.
Thank you. So at this time, we'd like to take a picture with the Garden Club members. If we can all fit in one picture, we will try. And we do have a couple of citations here for you. I'd like to read one into the record if I could. Town of Saugus citation, "To all persons whom these presents shall come, be it known this 24th day of June 2025, that the Saugus Board of Selectmen shall honor the Saugus Garden Club on its 80th anniversary," and it's signed by all five of the Board of Selectmen. So we made up --[509.31][509.31](Applause). So we made up two because there's two co-presidents, and at this time, I would invite all of the Garden Club members to come up for a picture, along with the board members. And of course, the Town Manager.
Do you want to stand on the chair? All right, you might, I'm not kidding you. On this one, I'm not even kidding. This is a serious one.
Mark, you need to sign a paper.
Close your eyes if it's a tenuous little apple.
The next item on the agenda is Pride Proclamation. Would one of the board members please read that into the record?
So, so I will, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Serino.
Whereas Pride Month began in June 1969 on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after the LGBTQ+ persons and their allies rose up to fight against discriminatory laws which have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas Saugus Mass denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, race, religion, nation, origins, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and is a town in which all persons should feel free, safe, welcome, respected, and affirmed by their peers and their community. And whereas all are welcome in Saugus Mass to live, work, and play, and every family in all of its various forms deserve a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas Saugus Mass appreciates the value and dignity of each person, recognizes the importance of equity and freedom, and acknowledges the positive contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community to actively promote principles of equality, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, the Saugus Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 in the Town of Saugus's Pride Month.
That's seconded by the Chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If you could please give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. It's Barbara Duznap, 15 Riverside Court, and I'm here because --
Thank you.
I've come up before about the dog park at, that's proposed for Stalker Playground, but today I'm here because I'm trying to, I was trying to request information from the town for the other location and addresses of the 12 other open spaces that were explored for the Dog Park project, as indicated on page seven of the alternative analysis within the notice of intent for the dog park. And I was told that they don't exist. They, I can't get them. They don't, there, so there's no analysis was ever done. For the, so Stalker Park Playground was pigeonholed for the dog park all along, it seems. From my, my requests, I asked for the, a copy of the site location analysis that was completed and performed by the Saugus Dog Park Committee or the Town of Saugus to determine the suitability and feasibility of the Stalker Playground location as the best option for the location of a dog park in Saugus. And I was told by the Primary Record Officer, Jeanne Meredith, that the town does not possess these documents and cannot provide them to me. But they were used in the notice of intent. It says that 12 other areas were reviewed and explored, and they must have done some kind of what? So I did some searching on the website and found there that the Saugus Dog Park Committee had agendas on there that were stamped by the Town Clerk. So they were open meetings, so I requested the minutes of those meetings, and I was told by the Primary Record Officer, Jeanne Meredith, as well as the Town Clerk, Ms. Shenna, that they didn't have them, because they only keep them for a year. But the Town Clerk's website on the town, the Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee Project Committee are all on there from 2017, minutes and agendas. So I don't understand why this information is being withheld from the residents, if it exists, which I'm guessing that it doesn't because I would have it, and I want to make it on the record, because I don't want it to appear suddenly that there is some analysis done. So, so that's part of my reason for being up here, is that. And my other, the issue is the April 15, 2025 minutes. I was, I'm sorry, I have to get them because my printer stopped printing. On that meeting, I spoke at that, and the Citizens' Comments for Ms. Meredith were on there, and for Ms. Dos Santos from Palmer Avenue. But mine says, my comments state that I requested an update on a correspondence copy pertaining to the Stalker Park, and my comments were about the ownership of 22 Stalker Street in regards to the dog park at, proposed at Stalker Playground. Because I sent out multiple letters to multiple departments, commissions, and boards in the town, and have not to date received any response about that, and to the Town Council, and to special Town Council. Only CC though, for the special Town Council. And I've received no answer except to state what's happening with the, with that issue of the, that's being used for the proposed dog park, the property that's being used. So I wanted to make the comment because I'm not sure if I, because I know they're reviewed these minutes, and they're not complete, and the other two are very distinct, and they are very, sorry, I didn't get first. They're very complete, where mine are not. And my name is also spelled wrong, and I know that me and Mrs. Panetta know each other, so I'm guessing that someone from the board reviewed these minutes before they were approved. So, and that was my other question. And my other thing was to Mr. Chicalini, because in my looking at the agendas for the Saugus Dog Park, I find that you are, were the, one of the members is, but I'm not sure what capacity, and as lo, as well as Ms. Meredith. And do, do you have, was there a, was there a site location analysis done for 12 other locations for the dog park?
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes, Mr. Selectman.
So typically, I wouldn't, in, in Citizens' Comments, we don't usually go back and forth, but I'm happy to answer the question. Yes, the Dog Park Committee did review, I wouldn't say analysis, we had specs of what they look for, minimum square footage and acreage, and it couldn't already be deeded to an offline property. It had to be a purposed, an active location. So the offline schools immediately came out of Oaklandvale, Lynnhurst, and all of those, because we don't know, we can't sign on for a dog park to go perpetually in a location, and then if we decide that we're going to repurpose that, that location for a youth and rec center, and it might have to go right where the dog park is, that wouldn't be, we couldn't sign on the dotted line for that. That's one of the requirements for the grant, is that you have to be able to sign that you're going to be able to keep it for its purpose and its location. So that eliminated, I don't know, five or six of the locations. Some of the other locations we considered even was Bristow Park and others, but they didn't meet the square footage. If you look at outside of the ball field, what was available for additional space? So yes, there was, I wouldn't say it was a detailed analysis, but it was an analysis to see if it met the specs of the grant. Because if you look at our agendas, one of the primary things listed on every agenda was to minimize the tax burden to the residents.
Well, I can't look at all the agendas because I don't have them. I wasn't able to get them. They --
They were posted. The agendas, not the minutes. The agendas were posted. You said you saw them.
Yeah, no, I found some, but not all.
There was only three.
No, because there was, in those agendas, they referred to other meetings that you were approving minutes on.
Yeah, we own, we had, we had an organizational meeting with no minutes, and then we had three meetings, and they were all Zoom.
So?
They were all Zoom. And the analysis that was done was to see if they met the minimum size criteria, the location they want it someway, somewhere centralized to the locate proximity of the town, and, you know, parking, and, and having access to utilities.
And so you, when you did this, you checked the deeds for any conditions of use as well as ownership?
That would, that would not fall, so you got to understand, this wasn't an official committee. I actually had a ruling from Town Council. We didn't even fall under the open meeting laws because we weren't a committee that was sanctioned from town meeting. We weren't acting on behalf of the Town of Saugus. This was a group of volunteers that got together to try to bring, hold on, let me finish. Try to bring a dog park to the town because we had an, oh, this has been asked for 10 years. People have been asking for this dog park. They came to the floor at town meeting asking for a dog park. So we were trying to take it on. No good deed goes unpunished. I never had my eyes set on St, on Stalker. That's what the belief is. That's not the case. Our, our job was to try to identify sources of money to pay for it in a potential location or locations that would meet the criteria for the grant funding to minimize the tax burden on the residents. When we got together as a group of people, there were also members of town meeting in that precinct that attended the meetings. When we got together as a group on Zoom, we posted our meeting because we thought it was in the best interest of the town for full disclosure, so that people want to, and we did have residents Zoom in. Now, I also have a letter that I happen to be looking through some information the last couple of weeks. I have a letter from residents in your neighborhood from 2022 to our Dog Park Committee, to the chairman at the time, Cogliano, that was very, was actually supportive. It says that, that the dog park could be a good, a good use for the site, blah, blah, blah. They didn't want it to impede the ballpark, but they thought that the basketball in the tennis courts, and I'll share a copy of that letter with you, the basketball in the tennis courts was a good location because they're, they're in decrepit condition. That's in a formal letter dated 2022, from six residents in that neighborhood. So I'm just saying, this was not done with any ill intent. Anybody who knows me, I'm a fourth-generation Sargonian. I would never do anything to put people in harm's way. I was trying to, I was trying to solve an issue where so many communities have dog parks that are used and appreciated, and there was a public outcry for one. So when we got together from a group of people that want, that were like-minded and wanted to do it, we thought that was in the best interest of the town.
Right.
We brought our assessment to the then-town manager and just said that of all the locations that we saw, the ones that seemed to meet the criteria for the grant, meet the size restrictions, and don't have a current offline status --
Right.
-- was Stalker Playground.
Okay, so the dog, so the Dog Park Committee did not do a full analysis. It was, so it was left to the town.
It didn't have to be a full analysis if it didn't meet the size. If it didn't meet the size --
Well, who was checking the condition of use and the ownership of the property that was being used for the dog park?
That was after, that's after the fact. That, that would be done through, when they, we didn't have anything to do with the application. We did not apply for the grant. We disbanded right after we said what we said and did what we did. We disbanded and had no input after that on locate, on the application process. The consultants filled that out for the town with the --
Well, and that's fine. So now I'm wondering why the town didn't complete a site location --
All right.
-- analysis for, for these, for the other locations.
I understand, I understand the concern.
Because this is environmentally sensitive area, so why wasn't that taken into consideration when you were looking at the lot size?
Well, and you brought that up at Conservation Commission, and they brought it up at different locations, and I don't think the same level of agreement exists between the DEP and the environmental and the conservation as the concerns of the neighbors. So I, I don't know what I don't know. We've had public meetings down there. We've had site visits down there. I, I, all I'm saying is, don't, I'm, I'm here to talk, to protect, the, the members of the committee should not be penalized for volunteering their time. I'm a public, an elected official, so I'll answer your questions.
That's right.
But the people that served on this committee were doing so with the best intent, trying to find a suitable location and not, and make sure that the dog park would not have a significant cost to the taxpayers.
Okay.
With all due respect, public comment is supposed to be limited to three minutes, and it's not supposed to be a back and forth.
I apologize, Madam Chairman.
Oh, no. I, I, I understand.
Well, I, I also apologize, but I --
And so we, we gave you some leeway with the back and forth this evening, but we do need to move forward.
From the town on these minutes and everything. And my other thing was not to cause any whatever, but if that's true, then I went to the Secretary of State and found the Friends of Saugus Dog Park in perpetuity.
I explained that a long time ago. Originally, we thought we had to apply as a nonprofit for the grant. So we set up, we, we sent an application in to set up a nonprofit organization, never filed the registration statements, because then we realized Stanton Foundation did not require that. So the town did the application, and we didn't even need to set up the nonprofit. It's not officially set up. We've never filed the --
So -- So, all right, so the town set this up?
No, we, the committee, were trying, thought we, we were going to apply for the grant. We thought we were going to do everything. We, that was one of the first orders of priority that we did. I had it done through my firm. I had them set that up as a placeholder in case we had to apply for the grant through the nonprofit. Once we realized the nonprofit wasn't required, we did not pursue five oh one C three status. There's no official nonprofit setup. We never filed, it's called a ten twenty-three application. We never filed it.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Struzna.
Thank you.
And thank you, Selectman Chicalini, for your clarification remarks.
Yeah, again, I apologize and I apologize to those that are waiting. I just felt it was important to answer the concerns.
No, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's important that everybody gets the correct information, so thank you for that. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Did you want to, sir, did you want to address the board?
Yeah, that's perfect.
We need your name and address, please, for the record.
Certainly. My name is Philip Gindy and my address is nine Larchmont Road in Melrose, Massachusetts.
Melrose?
Melrose, yes. Am I in the wrong town? No, I'm not. So I'm the caretaker of a Saugus resident who resides on Cliff Road. And there's a neighboring tree that's an issue, so I, I provided a statement and several emails for the record with Mr. Chicalini. And I will read the statement. Dear Selectmen, I'm here to formally request the immediate inspection and removal of a hazardous tree located at thirty Cliff Road at the entrance of Frankers Pond that poses a direct substantial risk to public safety. The tree is dangerously leaning at an unusual angle towards the entrance of the road. There's some concerns about the rooting system because it is in ledge. My concern is that should the tree fall, it will definitely cause property damage to cyclists and motorists alike, bodily injuries, or possible death to the pond visitors. Additionally, it will certainly damage the property across the street and possibly injure the occupants or visitors therein. The aforementioned property is occupied by a very sick elderly handicapped person whom I caretaker for, that is my sister. I will submit to emails and photographs, which I already have, of the subject tree. The first email sent, the first email was sent several times to the town officials. However, the emails seem to have been ignored and no remedial action has been taken. These emails point out that the town, and I'm quoting here, this is from the owner of the property, I'm sorry, this is from the statute. The town has the authority to address these trees under section, under chapter eighty-seven, section five, and order its removal. That seems to be in question based on a previous discussion at the beginning of this meeting. The question, the second email provided was sent on March thirty-first of two thousand twenty by the property manager of thirty Cliff Road in which he states, and I quote, diseased tree on the path of Franker Pond, see attached pics, end quote, should qualify as another quote, public nuisance. I respectfully request this body to direct the town's official to exercise their powers under chapter eighty-seven, section five, and order the removal of this dangerous and hazardous condition. Respectfully submitted, Philip Gindy, and that's me.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I just want to point out, add a couple of pieces of context. I actually was speaking to you on the, on the walk-in, that's how I.
And I thank you, by the way, for your courtesy.
Very, very much so. And that, so I, I spoke with the town manager and the DPW did go out and look at the location. Unfortunately, the tree, A, is a healthy tree appearance-wise, it's fully leafed. And also, they determined that it's not on town property, it's on private property. So town manager has suggested that the gentleman speak to town council to, to pursue the proper avenues. And then if, you know, he can go through the channels to try to get the tree to be cut because it does hang over into the property that this gentleman's involved with. So I think that would be a logical next step is to talk to Mr. Vaspoli, get his take on the whole situation. And then if he feels differently, as town manager Crabtree said, if he feels differently that the town has, you know, some leeway, we can take it from there.
Yeah, just, Madam Chairman, through you to add to that. So the DPW has been in contact on this issue with town council. Town council made a determination that it's on private property, it's a healthy tree, that we don't have a right as a town to be able to go on somebody's private property and cut their tree. So I think initially they thought it was on town property. It's not. It's a healthy tree. But I, like I spoke with the gentleman myself, him having a conversation about how they interpret the statute and whether the town as a, as a government can go on somebody's property and cut their tree, I don't, I, I don't know if that's feasible, but I think him having a conversation would be something that would be helpful, I think, to lawyer to lawyer to explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. We've had this issue before with healthy trees on other people's properties that they want the town to cut down and.
It's unfortunate, it's a tough, it's, I, I did advise, you know, to try to put notice to the other property owner and their insurance company because obviously if something happens, they're, they should be maintaining their own tree. Or, you know, the, the person that's, has the nuisance, you know, spend the funds to do whatever needs to get done and then, you know, go to, civilly litigate to get those funds. But I, I think, you know, my understanding when I talk to town council is for the town to be able to go on someone's private property and cut a tree that's healthy, it's just, doesn't seem feasible the way you explained it to me. But I think, whatever the town council determines, we would do. It's just that we're, we're in a position, I can't do something against legal counsel's advice.
Thank you very much for your follow-up. Thank you. It's now time for our first public hearing this evening. Notice this hereby, given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Kyle Brosu, thirty-six Golden Hills Road, Saugus, Mass. for a common vicarious license to operate Muen Bruin to be located at thirty-eight Hamilton Street, Saugus, Mass. oh one nine oh six. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, two ninety-eight Central Street, Saugus, Mass. on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM. Are you the applicant? Would you mind, please, coming to the podium? And if you wouldn't mind, please, giving us your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about the business that you're proposing, please.
Home address or business address? Home. Kyle Brosu, thirty-six Golden Hills Road, Saugus.
Would you mind very much picking up the microphone a little bit? It's, the acoustics in here are a little difficult, so you have to talk directly into the microphone. Thank you very much. And can you tell us a little bit about the business that you're proposing, please?
Sure, it's going to be selling ice cream and coffee.
Well, those are my two favorite things. Could you tell us about the hours of operation, how many days you want to be open, a little bit about the number of seats that you're, you're looking for, a little bit more about the business, please?
Can you say that last part again?
Sure. I just would like to confirm the hours you'd like to be open, the days of the week that you would like to be open, and how many seats you would like to have.
Got it, so seven days a week, six thirty AM to ten PM. And then I can't hear that last part.
How many guests? How many people?
Fourteen.
What?
Fourteen.
Fourteen seats?
Yes.
Because, okay, because in your note to us, it said twenty-four guests.
Yeah, that got changed. It should have been amended to Meredith.
Okay. So fourteen.
So tell us a little bit more about your menu.
Richardson's Ice Cream and New England Coffee.
So ain't going to be making sundaes and trapps and all?
Yes, exactly.
And ice cream cakes?
Yep, yeah, birthday cakes.
I'm in walking distance, that's dangerous.
I'm closer than you.
That's very dangerous.
I don't have to drive up to Middleton anymore.
And if we do grant this, this evening, when would you plan to be open?
July fifth is the goal.
Very good. Do board members have any questions this evening? Selectman Cogliano.
Kyle, is that seven days a week, six thirty to ten?
Yes.
So just to, seven days a week, six thirty AM to ten o'clock PM. Are you going to be serving anything else besides coffee in the morning?
Wholesale bagels and muffins as well.
Because I assumed you'd be having breakfast foods if you were going to be.
No sandwiches or anything like that.
No.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, would somebody please make a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we grant the request of Kyle Brosu, thirty-six Golden Hills Road, Saugus, for his common vicarious license to operate Muen Bruin located at thirty-eight Hamilton Street, Saugus, Mass. Hours of operation Monday through Sunday, six thirty AM to ten PM, seating for fourteen, no, no cooking happening, happening on the premises. And there was a note from Inspeccional Service, not Inspeccional Services, from Health Inspector, of course, I can't find it. One second, be with me. Okay, maybe I don't have it. Oh, there it is. Establishers, the, from the Health Department, a full plan review from the Board of Health under its rules and regulations just before final opening. And then a pump and an inspection of the grease trap, did they do that yet?
Yes.
They already did the pump and inspection of the grease trap?
The.
The inspection of the, the pump and.
Inspection of the grease trap, no, not yet.
They haven't done that yet. Okay, so that, obviously, we'll make that a requirement, one, one of the requirements before opening.
So we've installed the indoor grease trap, but the inspection on the outside hasn't been done yet?
Yeah, they want, they'll want to make sure that it's just, doesn't need to be pumped out. And, what? You flip a coin. Whichever one has the least amount in it.
I think you cleaned them all.
So. And I think that's all I had, Madam Chair.
And that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? That's seconded by, yeah. Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Good luck.
Motion carries five to zero. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
It is now time for our second public hearing. Notice this hereby, given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Shoel Yasin, five Urban Street, Billerica, Mass. for an entertainment license to operate Q Ball X to be located at twelve oh one Broadway, Saugus, Mass. oh one nine oh six. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, two ninety-eight Central Street, Saugus, Mass. on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh five PM. Hi, good evening. Could we please have your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Shoel Yasin. I've been doing this entrepreneur and this public service business for many, many years. And this location was originally opened in, right after the COVID, at Peabody Mall, North Shore Mall. I was operating there from twenty twenty November and successfully ran with a five-star public rating that everybody liked my location and liked to come and enjoy playing pool. So recently, the landlord had some more permanent tenants, which is going to double or triple my rent, which is out of my, you know, control and also out of my affordability. So therefore, I applied in the Saugus Square One Mall inside, one of the unit inside the mall. And they issued me a lease that they're willing to let me open. And first of all, I'd like to thank Meredith for helping me, guiding me through the process that how we can open it. And it's basically just, I'm putting, there is no construction, there is no requirement for anything. All I did was just to pull the, put the pool table and lights on. There is no other such thing needed there. Basically, it's, well, I would say, like, successfully ran through the neighborhood of all over. Mostly, I, after I opened the business, that the community came from all over, from Lynn to Swamp Scott, to all the way to, from Boston, people liked my place. And at that time, after the COVID, there was not much of a public, entertainment was available. So after that, I've been running it and I'm willing to open, relocate the location in Square One Mall, one of the unit inside the mall. And therefore, I applied for it to see if I can open it. And there is not much else to say. And it will definitely create, I mean, it's a small, but maybe two to four people job, but mostly I'll be operating it myself from the beginning until it comes to reliable expenses that I can afford more employee.
So you already have a business, Planet X Mini Golf?
Yes.
At the Square One Mall?
Yes.
Where will this Q Ball X be located in conjunction to where you are right now?
No, Planet X is still going on and I'm willing to continue it. It's in, next to the Macy's. And this one is close to the center court where the Santa comes and we take pictures and right next to it in the center court.
Did you say it's going to be next to the food court?
No, no, no. It's downstairs by the center of the mall, which is where usually, Christmas time, Santa comes and sits, right next to it in the center court.
Where Forever Twenty-One used to be?
Yeah, no, it's right opposite, other side of the Forever Twenty-One.
Okay, and so you, just to confirm, your business hours would be Monday through Thursday, ten AM to eight PM, Friday and Saturday, ten AM to nine PM?
And Sunday, twelve to six.
Sunday, twelve to six.
Basically, mall hours.
Sorry?
Sorry, it's basically the mall hours.
The mall hours, excellent. And then ten pool tables?
Ten pool tables.
Very good. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serino.
Just one question. Hi, how are you?
All right, sir.
On your letter, you said you previously operated a Q Ball X Pool Hall at the North Shore Mall in Peabody from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, but do you still own that company or?
No, actually, they, actually, let, terminated my lease because of the permanent tenant. I was a temporary tenant there for all this time because the permanent tenant basically paid a lot more than the temporary tenant. So they had to let me go, even though they didn't want to and a lot of people also requested, but the Simon Mall Corporation goes for like more, like a corporate decision, so it wasn't up to the mall to keep me there.
So, so the rent was too high over there?
Yes, the rent is really high and of course, they're considering themselves a five-star mall and therefore, the, the rent was unbelievably out of my reach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
And that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serino.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we grant the permit for ten pool tables, hours of operation Monday through Thursday, ten AM, no, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to nine PM, and Sunday, twelve to six. And I know the building inspector mentioned on his recommendation that the occupancy was, would be forty-eight people?
That's the maximum, actually, if all the table is full, but usually, it's never.
So that would be my motion, Madam Chairman.
It's basically each time, three or four table rented each time.
With the ten pool tables.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Potential amendment, I, I believe it's Monday through Thursday, ten to eight, Friday and Saturday, ten to nine.
Yes.
That is what it is.
Okay, so I'd like to amend it to that.
Okay, so that's seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion with the one amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you. When do you hope to open?
I would like to open as soon as I can. Still, I have to go for the final inspection, which is Mike is going to help me out with that. which is Mike is going to help me out with that. After the inspection, then I can open anytime. Basically, I want to open as soon as possible.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and good luck to you.
Thank you, and I would appreciate if you guys have any chance to come and shoot some pool. This is a family entertainment place, which is only for the family and friends and kids, even from the, I have kids playing here from eight, nine years old to all the way to sixty, seventy, eighty years old people. And everybody kind of encouraged me and congratulates me that I decided something like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under new business. At our last meeting, we said that we were going to do a quick review of licensing fees. And Meredith put together for us, it's in our package, what some of the other communities are charging for the different fees that the selectmen are responsible for. We are not finished putting together that spreadsheet. I'd like to get, which we got today. We got Boston and what other communities, and Malden, because I asked for Malden. And we also want to get Lynn, Peabody, and Wakefield. But the one thing that I would like the board to consider is changing to existing alcohol licenses. You can see that Westport does have a hundred-dollar fee. It takes a lot of time. That might be something that the board may want to consider, especially when there's an alcohol sale, an all-alcoholic sale. It takes Meredith, how long does it take for you to pull all that information together? When there's an all-alcoholic sale from one business to another, how long does that take you to get all that paperwork together? Yeah, so it's an awful lot of work for her and time. I think a hundred-dollar fee, a minimal fee like that, is something that perhaps the board would like to consider. But back in 2003, the Board of Selectmen at that time did take a vote that we would have a review of licenses every June. So that's the reason why I asked Meredith to put this together. There was also a letter that used to be sent to some of the other departments, Inspeccional Services and the Fire Department. And I asked Meredith to share that with the town manager to see if he wanted us to move forward with asking the other departments if they would like to review their fees as well. So I'm not sure, Mr. Town Manager, if you've had a time to review that or not. But I would hope that maybe at the next meeting, we could continue this discussion when we finish filling up this information. Because we just want to make sure that we're in line with the other communities surrounding us. The other thing I'll just quickly mention as well, earlier today, I put together a, from the ABCC, it's a listing of all of the all-alcoholic licenses and packaged stores and beer and wine. And I sorted it to make it easier to read. I color-coded it so that we would have that information for our July 15th meeting. There was an advertisement that the board agreed upon that is on rotation on SCTV. And it's also, we posted it twice in the newspapers for one all-alcoholic license that we wanted to give as the town. I would like the board to know that two restaurants are interested in that. Vickers Mediterranean was interested as well as King Town Barbecue. So we're going to, the board has got, we're going to get all that information together and we'll vote on one of those businesses, because the due date was yesterday, to get that information in. And we'll do that on July 15th. So that is what the board decided we're going to do. I'm just working to facilitate that for our July 15th meeting with the help of Meredith. So thank you for that. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is, under licenses, is we don't have a license. We have no rules and regulations under bring your own booze here in town. And I did ask Town Council to take a look at that and see if we wanted to do anything with that or just leave it out so anybody could do, to bring their own booze. The only thing I was concerned with with that is I don't want somebody walking in with a six-pack into McDonald's. So I'm not sure exactly how, what people can and cannot do. And that's why I asked for Town Council's assistance on this, because this did come up as an issue a couple of weeks ago. Selectman Chicalini and I worked through that, and I think the business owner was happy with the results. But we just want to do, we want to help businesses, but we want to do the right thing for the community. Any comments on anything I just said?
No.
The next item on the agenda was the Town Manager's report. Mr. Town Manager?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just have some important information here regarding the pavement improvement projects. A paving management program throughout Saugus is going to begin. And this will improve roadway safety and traffic flow. So that, we do annually, and that's something that you guys have supported. You know, Finance Committee recommended and the town meeting appropriated money for. We are pleased to announce that a series of pavement improvement projects within several areas of Saugus will soon be underway as an effort to ensure that the town's streets are in the best possible condition. Following streets will be undergoing milling, overlay paving, roadway reclamation, and curb replacements as part of the town's paving plan to improve roadway safety and traffic flow. Auburn Street, Eastern Ave, Dudley Street, Pinehurst Street, Lewis Street, A Street, Serena Way, and Laurel Street, and Avon Street. And just to note, roadways listed above does not necessarily mean the entire roadway will have work performed on it. Some of it's partial and we do it one year and then do the rest of it the other year. As you know, costs have significantly increased on what it costs to do some of this paving. Department of Public Works will oversee the pavement improvement projects throughout the town. Prep work will begin, actually begin, it'll begin tomorrow with the removal of frames and covers from streets. Roadway reclamation efforts will begin, I'm told, on Monday, July 7th, 2025. It should be completed by late summer 2025. The end date is obviously weather-dependent. Parking will be limited in work zones during construction and traffic detours will be established as required to allow for the work to be, the work to be reached, to reach completion. Pavement improvements will result in better quality roadways for the community, safe roadway improvements, improve the improved traffic flow, reduce accidents, and make it easier for everyone to get to where they need to be. It's a top priority, I think, obviously, for the Board of Selectmen and this administration as we continue to make improvements that are beneficial improvements to our community's infrastructure. We are happy, obviously, to continue to provide these services to our residents and the families of Saugus. We'd like to thank everybody in advance, the residents, for their patience and cooperation during the construction project. If they need further information, they can call the Saugus DPW at 781-231-4143. But as you all know, when we do roadwork, people get annoyed. It's a problem in everybody's neighborhood. We get the calls. But it's sort of a process that we have to go through to make sure that we get through and be able to improve the roadways. If we don't do them, then we get criticized for not doing roadwork. But we'll, but again, it'll start up tomorrow, doing some of the prep work. And then I think July 7th is when they start doing some of this. And they'll have different areas that they're doing, and some of it's partial, some of it's sidewalks, and all different things that are going on. So I just wanted to let the residents know, and this will be, I think tomorrow morning, we'll go up on our website, go out to the media and get, you know, send the cable and put out through our text messaging, SMS service, and emails as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions for our Town Manager? Seeing none, we don't have any minutes tonight to approve. It is now time for our second citizens' comments of the evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, it is time for members' motions or members' comments. I'd like to start with Selectman Riley, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just like to extend my prayers and best wishes for a speedy recovery to State Trooper Lieutenant Donnie Bossy. He was in that horrific hit-and-run on Riviera Beach Boulevard. It's a dangerous job and I want to thank him for what he does to keep everybody safe and all police. So my best again, and to the Bossy family. And again, Donnie, hope you have a speedy recovery. And I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. And that's going to be in already two weeks or less than that. So just be safe and enjoy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too would like to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July and also extend our wet best wishes to the Bossy family. Mr. Manager, I had a couple of requests for you. I got a call from a couple of residents that live adjacent to 304 Lincoln Ave requesting that the crosswalk be repainted. Kind of tough to see. And then the other thing?
Whereabouts is that?
It's in front of Cogliano Plaza.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll find out. But I thought they just completed.
Next door to my house.
I was trying to think. It sounds familiar. I'm 304. I think that they, I thought I got a text today saying they just completed all the line painting, but let me, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I'll check on that.
And then the other request, Mr. Manager, if you could have the DPW look at the rail trail. Looks like you could use a little cutting.
So we have that scheduled for the second week in July. So we just, that way you get into the new budget and it's sort of halfway mark.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Serino, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to echo Selectman Riley's point with the Lieutenant Bossy family on Ballard Street. They're a longtime family, his wife, and I want to wish him all the best. The Save Annual Meeting and Dinner is tomorrow night at Route 1 Grill House. Fifty-two years Save's been an organization. That's pretty amazing. This past Saturday, I know we were all at the Saugus Historical Strawberry Festival. I was there. Like I said, I'm sorry I didn't go to the garden club, but I'm bad with plants. But Saturday, June 14th, we were pretty busy the last couple of weeks. Saturday, June 14th, we were at the Vitale Family Scholarship Award. That was honoring Officer Harold Vitale. He died in the line of duty in Saugus forty years ago. So I want to congratulate this year's college recipients. Friday, we get the Fox Zip Trip, 7 o'clock, Town Hall. Hopefully, maybe we can go down and say hi to everybody down there. And I want to thank, we met with the state delegation this morning. I want to thank Representatives Jessica Janino, Donald Wong, and State Senator Brendan Creighton for coming today. We spoke a lot about upgrades to Route 1, traffic issues, the lights up at Peabody, widening of Copeland Circle. So hopefully, maybe we can get some things done. And I want to wish everybody else a happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Serino.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you mind if, before you go, or I can go after, I just wanted to make a comment?
Sure.
Whatever's here. So I come in the board and trying to, like this whole dog park thing. But my only thing would be is, this is all being appealed and there's lawyers involved, the DEP, there's court cases. I think, you know, we're represented by counsel. I think if people want to communicate, it's probably better in writing because otherwise it becomes, well, someone said this and somebody said that. You know, I think we're all regular people trying to do the right thing and there's nothing nefarious. I think, like Selectman Chicalini explained it correctly, but I think in the future, we just, we're represented by counsel and let them deal with whatever, you know, the process is rather than getting into a back and forth. I think it's just not, it's not in the best interest anymore for us. It's not productive. And I think that we're all trying to give explanations and be honest and, you know, trying to put our good face forward that we're, you know, try to do something that we thought, you know, the public wants. And nothing goes on without controversy. But I just think there's lawyers involved in different things, and we don't want to say something that may be not true and/or, you know, not the right information. So I think in some sense, we should have explained to the nice lady that's, you know, come here a few times, whatever's your question, it should just be in writing as far as requests, and we give them in writing back. That way, it just doesn't get convoluted, I think. But that's just a suggestion.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Town Manager, I thought the Zip Trip was going to begin at eight. It's beginning at seven. I saw something that says it's beginning at seven now. Seven to 10.
I think whatever their time, it's their show. It's not, we don't, I don't know. I think they're setting up at like 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. So I think it is pretty early. I think it's like 7 to 10. Yeah, I think it is early. You'd have to double-check. I don't know the exact time, but I know it's pretty early.
Yeah, I saw something.
I want to make sure you're giving on time.
I saw a few things online that said 7 o'clock. So there's, I believe it's from 7 to 10. So I just want to make sure that we're giving people the right information.
Mike's going to get some TV time. He wants to interview Gene Levanki.
I'll show up later.
When everyone's gone.
They don't care about us.
No.
They care about the fun stuff.
Yeah.
But that is exciting. I think it's very exciting that they're coming to our town of Saugus.
It's the second time. They came once before.
Yeah.
I just wanted to quickly review with the board our next meetings. We only have five scheduled meetings left for our term. Our next meeting is July 15th. Then we have August 19th. And then we start again with two meetings in September, September 16th and September 30th. And then October 14th, we have one meeting in October. It's been tradition. We only have one meeting before the election in November and October. We don't want anyone grandstanding. It's, that has been the tradition over the many years. So only five meetings left with the five of us.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask that if we can take this offline, though, because I really want to look at my calendar. I always get myself in trouble when we try to commit to things tonight, and then I'm texting the board tomorrow saying, sorry. I can't do that night.
These were the dates that we all agreed on a while back, but if we need to change them, we can. But these were the ones that we all agreed on. But as long as we know that we're going to be back here on July 15th, it's all good. The Moms Cancer Fighting Angels 11th Annual Car Show Cruise Night is going to be held on Sunday, June 13th at the Saugus Middle High School from 4 o'clock to 8 p.m. And the raiding date is July 20th. Guy Moley is the person coordinating that. So if you have any questions, you can contact him. He does a phenomenal job each year, and it's for such a wonderful cause. My best goes out to the Bossy family. It's a terrible tragedy. Just to piggyback on what Selectman Serino said, the Historical Society, along with the Garden Club, did a wonderful job at the Strawberry Festival last Saturday. So congratulations to everybody that was involved. Want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. So with that said, would somebody please make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Seconded by the chair, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Good night, everybody.
Motion carries five to zero. Hope everybody has a wonderful evening. Good night.
Thank you.